Understanding one chapter. Thank you, Kenneth. Understanding a chapter. And tackling it and when we explain in their own words, they can make it better, easier for everyone to understand. Because sometimes when we watch something on the YouTube channel, we may not be able to ask questions or have a physical presence, like a one-on-one presence than this study session. So that's why I thought it was important for us to do this. So I was excited when I saw some people actually working with the teams. Then I read some of their chats. And then I do hope that at least everyone had a good, you know, interaction with their team members. So let's not waste too much time. I really don't want to spend too much time here. Today is Sunday night, going to prepare for work tomorrow. And hopefully, I have time for us to spend at least one hour 30 minutes, but I do hope we spend less time. And remaining 30 minutes is supposed to be for questions and answers and anything else that we want to ask ourselves. So let me first of all put up the program. So that I know who's to go first. Okay, so can you all see my screen?
Yes, I can, I can.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. So, okay, so the first. Okay, so I think maybe before we start the presentation, maybe I can take maybe three comments from people. And let me, and then here they will experience of this group work. Then we can go straight up into the first topic of the agenda. So I need three speakers, maybe you can raise your hand. Then. Then I'll call my teammates, help me call their names. Does anyone want to talk about their experience of this teamwork? Okay, okay, so since I guess since no one is ready to maybe give your own response. Okay, let's talk about, let's call on the first team to have their own presentation. So the first team is Team Two. This was to present on Module One. And the team members are Team Two, sorry. So we have Fala Kemi, Gabriel, Gabriela, Genevieve, Christopher, Hosanna, and Precious, I do all present here. Okay, Hosanna, I see you're in the meeting.
Oh, yes, Precious is here.
Okay, Precious, okay, Precious, are your team members here?
Well, I think not all.
Okay.
Just a few.
Okay, how many are present?
So I was having audio issues earlier. I wanted to, you were asking for our experience working as a team.
Okay.
I don't know, is it too late to bring that in now?
No, you can talk. From there. No, you can give your experience. Hello, can you hear me?
Hello?
Yes, you can give your experience.
Hello?
Hello? It's Precious. Gabriela, I think you wanted to say something. Hello, Team Two members. Hosanna, are you there? Can you hear me? Gabriela?
Hello?
Hi, Precious, okay, welcome back.
Yeah, sorry, I got kicked out. I guess my network is bit bad.
No problem.
It's a bit poor.
Okay.
Yes, so I was asking, I don't know if it's too late. I was trying to make a suggest, make a comment when you asked about how teamwork was.
Go ahead, you can do so, you can do so. Before you start your present, before at least before your team presents, you can talk us about your experience.
I'm speaking for myself now, not for my team. I, okay. Hello?
Hi, we can hear you, we can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Precious, can you hear me?
Okay, so I said my experience, I feel like the, the team. Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, please, I, go ahead. I think my network is really poor. Okay, can someone in the team help her? Hello? Okay, can Team Two members, can you please identify themselves by raising your hands? If you're in Team Two, kindly raise your hand, let us know if you're all present. Or you can type in the chat box, so we can know you're all here. Grace, Genevieve, Udi. Gabriela, Genevieve, I know, I've seen Hosanna present at the top. Okay, so who has a presentation? Hello, who's making the presentation for us? Hello, Team Two, can you hear me? This, so now we're going to end this meeting. But please, respond, does anyone have a presentation to make? Who has a presentation to make? Am I audible to everyone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so who has a presentation for Team Two?
Good evening.
Good evening, ma.
This is Hosanna.
Sorry?
Hosanna Azubike speaking.
Hi, Hosanna, oh, sorry. Hi, Hosanna, good evening, how are you?
I'm fine, I had a little break. To present for Team Two.
Okay. All right, so would you like to share your screen?
Okay.
All right, I'll stop sharing now.
Sorry, some minutes.
Okay, and meanwhile, she's setting up her own presentation. Can everyone who's going to present for their team, maybe they can make sure that they have their own presentations open already, so that we don't spend so much time waiting, okay?
Sorry, please give me some minutes. I'm trying to use my phone and I'm finding it somehow difficult to locate the documents.
Okay, fine, we can locate documents.
Yes.
Okay, so let me, let's do this. If everyone is having difficulty, if anyone's having difficulty in in presenting from their devices, maybe you can all send it, send the presentations to my email. I will put my email in the chat box, so that you can send it there and I present on your behalf and you can just speak over it, okay?
It does, that's better.
That should be better. Well, I've done that earlier.
Okay, so I'll send my email. So please, everyone should send in their presentation, so that I can present for you. They can talk over it.
Sorry, did you send it on the chat box?
Yes, I did.
I can't see.
Okay, I'll send it on the WhatsApp group as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So I've sent my email address on the chat box. Okay, we have sorrys in your hand, Infinite Hot8, please. Can you change your name so I know who you are? Hello, who is Infinite Hot8? Have you sent it?
I don't send it now.
Okay. Okay, so. Okay. So Hosanna, over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Hosanna Azubike, I'll be representing Team Two. We are discussing on Module One of our course, Introduction to Epidemiology in Global Health. And the topic for Module One is Introduction to Epidemiology and Quantitative Research. So the next, the next slide. So on this module, this module basically talked about is an introduction into the course. Giving us an introductory, an introduction of what epidemiology is all about and definition of some basic terms in epidemiology. So what we are going to be looking at shortly is the definition of epidemiology, epidemiology terminologies, descriptive epidemiology, burden of diseases, measuring of excess risk, as was discussed in the lectures of the module. Next slide, please. Okay, according to the study, epidemiology was defined as the study of disease pattern within a population to determine risk factors that can be prevented or controlled. Epidemiology is the study of disease pattern within a population to determine the risk factors, to determine things that can lead to a disease. And how, whether or not the disease can be prevented or controlled. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, there are some basic terminologies that are used in epidemiology as, as a, as a course. These are things that we actually need to get familiar with, like pandemic and epidemic. An epidemic is when a disease is said to have occurred in a greater level than expected within a specific population and in a defined geographical area. Why a pandemic is when an epidemic has exceeded a particular geographical area, has moved from one country to another, is becoming a global disease. When a, an epidemic is becoming global, we say, we will say it has become pandemic. Then we look at disease, we can say that disease is a negative health outcome of interest, like measles, sickle cell, cancer, all those things can be classified as, as disease. Then we see case definition. Then a case definition, to me, I understand is a specific set of criteria or characteristics that can be used to classify if a person has a disease or not. Then we have a disease, disease events. Then we say that this event is an outcome, a disease outcome, a disease outcome that can hap, that is, that can happen instantaneously, like maybe somebody that is, that has epilepsy, maybe being conversing or maybe fainting or any, any event that comes as a result of a particular disease is what we, we can see is disease events. Then we have things like disease states. Who, I, I understand that disease state is a period of a disease, like from the time that a person is susceptible to a disease to when the person is diseased, or a time when the person is resistant to a disease or immune, in an immune state, or every state, from susceptible state to disease state to, or resistance state or immune state, all about a disease is called the disease state. Then we have susceptibility. I will say that it means a period when a person is likely to have a, like the person is at risk to a disease. The person have the capacity of coming down with a disease. It doesn't, this doesn't necessarily mean that the person is sick. But when the person is at risk of a disease, that means the person can, there is probability that the person, a possibility that the person can come down with the disease. Then we have observation time. Observation time to me is when a person is being observed for the presence of a particular disease. Like in COVID-19, they said, when you make contact or when you are exposed, you need to isolate yourself for two weeks to check if you, you come, you will be COVID-19 positive or not. So the period, that period of two weeks, where you are on isolation, where they are still checking if you have the, the disease or not. That's what I understand as an observation time. Then we have population. Then I would say a population is a group of individuals that can be defined by a certain shared characteristics, like maybe adolescents, females, children. It can, people that shares a specific characteristics, like we can say students in year one or whatever, or male or female or de-aged. So a particular set of people that shares a particular, a specific characteristics, we define them as a population. Please, can we go to the next slide? Okay, I'm going to be talking about descriptive epidemiology. I would say that descriptive epidemiology describes a disease in a population by person, place, or time. A person, in terms of describing a disease that is common, that can be described according to maybe age, the type of person. Maybe this disease is relative to a particular group of people. Like we can see things like arthritis or high blood pressure is related to, to a people that are fat or the aged people. So thus, trying to describe a particular disease according to persons. Then place is when we are trying to relate a disease according to maybe nationality, according to the geographical area, the geographical, the geographical area of a particular people. Like example, maybe the disease is associated with a particular place due to the temperature or let's say, a particular disease that is associated, associated with some things like, we, there is a toxic working environment, like people that work with coal, maybe because of inhaling of the coal, it is associated with a particular disease. So the place when a disease is, is being related to a particular place, then we'll say this is a descriptive epidemiology according to place. Then timing also helps us to identify the cost of it, the cost early on in the outbreak, as in, there are some particular diseases that are actually associated with timing. Like we say flu, something like flu, normally or during cold period, more than during cold period. So when the study is being conducted on such diseases that is being related to a particular time, maybe calendar time or, or age, or a particular time, when we are saying that a disease is more, people are more at risk for a particular disease because of the time. That's when we are describing this disease in terms of time. Timing, that's my own understanding about descriptive epidemiology in terms of place, person, or time. Can we go to the next, next slide? Then we'll go over to body of disease. Then this body can be measured in terms of prevalence and incidence. Then in prevalence, we would say that prevalence is the frequency of disease in a defined population at a specific time. Then it can be calculated by dividing the number of people with the disease over the entire, the size of the population. Then when you come to incidence, incidence is the measure of the frequency of disease events or new over a specific period of time. The frequency of a disease event, you can calculate incidence in two forms. We, there are two types of incidence, which is incidence proportion, which is also known as cumulative incidence or incidence rates. Then incidence proportion, you calculate incidence proportion by dividing the number of people who developed the disease over the number of people who were initially at, at risk. Then incidence rate is known as the incidence density per person, or the, the incidence density, which can be calculated by dividing the number of incident events over the amount of person per time at risk for disease or for the disease or condition. The next slide. Then measuring of excess. Then measuring of excess risk. Here we are trying to measure the association between a certain exposure and a disease. Like we are trying to measure the possibility of a certain exposure leading to a particular disease. And this can be measured by calculating the relative risk of a particular disease. And in calculating the relative risk of a disease, you calculate it by dividing the risk of the disease in exposed, in exposed group over the risk of the disease in an unexposed group. So in relative risk, when you calculate the risk of disease in an exposed group with the risk of the disease and an unexposed group and your answer or your result is greater than one, it tells us that there is the increase in risk, that increasing exposure of, that the increased risk of the outcome, that there is an increased risk of the outcome in an exposed group. That means that we are trying to prove that the exposure really causes the outcome that brings about the particular disease of interest. Then if you divide and it's equal to one, it means that there is no difference between the exposure and there is no difference in the risk between the exposed and unexposed. And that means it does not necessarily mean that exposure, that exposure leads to that particular disease. And then when it is less than one, then there is reduced risk of outcome in the exposed group. So we cannot necessarily say that the exposure brings about the disease. So that's basically what module one was talking about. And in conclusion, we are made to understand that the association does not necessarily imply causation, even though that we have proven that there is an association between a disease. Let's say the relative risk is greater than one. There is an association between the risk, the exposure and outcome. It does not necessarily mean that the exposure is the causal agent for the disease. There could be other element that can influence a disease state. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Ozana. Please, can everyone clap for her? Maybe we can use our virtual buttons for that. Thank you so much. This was a very well presented, well done presentation. Okay, so your presentation was over 10 minutes. So we have now the time for questions. We reduce a bit. So maybe let us take two questions. Does anyone have any questions for her or for our team? Does anyone have any questions for our team? Feel free to type the questions in the chat box or read it or ask, okay. Or how about we do this? Let us finish all the presentations and then maybe at the end of everything, we can have questions. So if you have any questions, you can put it in the chat box and make reference to the presenter or to the team who wants to ask, who you want to answer the question. So at the end of every single thing, we can answer the questions. Okay, I think that's a better idea. What do you think?
Yes, I think it's okay for us to gain time.
Okay, all right. So next is, who is next? Next is supposed to be team six. They are taking module two. So I'm going to load your presentation now. Team six, this presentation, you should make it in 10 minutes. Hope you're able to do that.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. So who's presenting?
Good evening, everyone. Who's Mary? Who's Mary Jimmy?
Okay, ma'am. All right.
Good evening.
Okay.
All right. We are team six and we are seven in numbers. That is today we are going to present alone. Hello. Hello.
I can hear you.
Okay, we are presenting the topic that says basic concept of statistical decision and that is module two. And we have our outlines here, which is the introduction and definition of concepts, numerical summary and graphical summary of data. Please, can you go to the next slide? We have the measures of location and spread. We have the hypothesis testing and statistical inference and we have the conclusion. Hello.
We can hear you, boy.
Okay, yeah, in the introduction part of this course, we can see the definition of statistics. We say here that statistics is a numerical value that is calculated using all units in the sample. And we use these statistics to estimate or summarize the characteristics of the population. And we also see that we can use statistics to understand and summarize quantitative data and to make inference and conclusion about relationship between different measures of variables. In epidemiology, in other words, we can, we do not have information of the total population. So we collect information from samples to make an inference or conclusion about the population. So here in epidemiology, we often use a sample or subset of a population of interest to draw conclusion about the population as a whole. Then we will go over to the next slide, which is the definition of concepts. We have in the definition of concepts, we have population as a concept. We have sample as a concept and we have parameter as a concept. We also have descriptive statistics and inferential statistics as part of the concept. Now I would like to dwell a little bit on the descriptive statistics. Is a concept which is the first step in getting data analyzed. For example, if you have a very small individuals in a set, you can simply list each data point. However, with large individuals in your data, in your data sets, this is not feasible. And so you need to use descriptive statistics to be able to list out each data points in the larger sets. So in descriptive, it is very useful, you know, in descriptive statistics is very useful. It can help us gain information from the data. It will also help us, you know, it will guide us on the analysis plan here. And it can also help us identify any errors in the data such as outline values. And we are going to go over to types of data. We have the qualitative data, we have the nominal data, we have the ordinal data and we have the quantitative data. Here I would like to say that in nominal data, for example, you have the gender order. The categories are just a name in this nominal data. And you know, they can be male and female. Well, in ordinal data, such examples here that we can use in ordinal data can be, you know, two numbers, which is 2,000 to 5,000, for example, which is greater than 5,000. So in high categories such as, you can also use short or medium or tall, you know, to describe this type of ordinary data. Then in quantitative data, we have two types of data here. We have the discrete data, which is a count that takes integer value. Example, number of children. And we also have the continuous data, which is the count that do not take integer values. Example, height and weight of an individual. One of the most important features that can be used to summarize this continuous data, you know, is to determine the middle of the data, which can only be done using the measures of location. So in next one, we are going to see the numerical summary. We can say that we either use numbers or graph to summarize data for easy interpretation. So for easy interpretation, because a set of number are not easily understood by most people. For example, if we are looking at the blood pressure, some people might not really understand to interpret it. So it may not be easy to interpret a list pressure reading, but might be easy to interpret average blood pressure for over some period of time. So we are going to look at measures of location, central, which these measures of location can also be called central tendency. So in measures of location, it can also be called central tendency, like earlier said, we have the mean, we have the mean, we have the mode in these locations. So for example, here, in the measure of a CD4 count from five patients, we have to calculate the mean by adding all the individuals' observation values and dividing it by the number of the observation. As seen below, in this example, we have the mean to be 338. Here in this CD4 count in the mean. If you go over to the mean, you will see that we have the mean to be 338. So one of the characteristics of the mean is that it is very, very large or very small value relative that can have strong influence on the mean. So you can see that the large value is 900 day. That makes, that makes the mean to fall out of the true center of the data. So let's look at mean. Mean is a very sensitive to very small, very large value called outliers. So in that case, mean may not be representing the location of the majority of the data points, which is what we often look for when calculating measures of central location. So in the median, median is often affected by an outlier. You know, the data is sorted from the smallest to the largest value. We have two sets of the jump of the CD4. If you go to the median, you will see that we are having two samples there. So the first set, as we can see, the median there is 220. And then the second set that we have there, the median is 210. So when the number of observation is even, the median is the mean of the two middle values. That's why we are having that, if you can see. So here, therefore, 200 plus 220 equals to 420 divided by two, which will give us 210 for the second set. So we go over to the measures of spread. In measures of spread, we have the range, we have the percentiles, we have the variance. So the related measures of spread is the standard deviation, which measures how far the observed value are from the mean. So the standard deviation can strongly affect by the outliers here. So the standard deviation is the square root. It's also, the standard deviation here is the square root. So we have the graphical summary of data. So yeah, graphical summary of data is a graphical display very useful because you give us a look at both measures of location or where the middle of the data are and spread or how variable the data are. So here in the graphical summaries of data, we have the bar plot, which is the same thing as histogram. We have, we have the bar charts plots. He's commonly used to summarize group or category cloud data. The height of the bar is proportional to the values of the quantity they represent. So in the histogram, we have a, is similar to the bar plot that we just saw. But a histogram is used to display continuous data and the bar are join each other. So let's look at the hypotheses and testing here. So the definition of hypothesis is a permissive or claim that we want to test or investigate. It can really be anything at all, as long as you can put it to the test. Yes, so we have the null hypothesis here, we have the alternative hypothesis, we have the hypothesis testing. Here you can write out the hypothesis as HO, the null hypothesis as HO, while you have the alternative hypothesis represented as HA. So for example, here, it is believed that the average height of Nigerian is 150 centimeter. So Mrs. Jimmy now claims that the average height of Nigerian is not 150 cm. So I agree, you know, the hypothesis, null hypothesis is true. And so it is equals to that 150. So until it is proven wrong, it remains 150. So now what Mrs. Jimmy wants to do now is to carry out a research, which is the alternative hypothesis now, that he wants to test, you know, and claim that it is not 150. So that is where we have the alternative hypothesis comes in, which involves a claim to test. So Mrs. Jimmy will now have to test or carry out a research to say that all Nigerian height, average height is not 150. So now the outcome of the hypothesis, you can actually reject the null hypothesis. You can actually, you know, fail to reject the null hypothesis, which means you can accept it. Now there are steps in getting that, which is you have to go through a one sample test, a base sample test, a two a base sample test, a two sample test, a multiple sample test for you to either reject or accept the no eh, the hypothesis. Now, in conclusion here, we can calculate, we can say that we can calculate test statistics from a sample to make inference about a population parameter. We can also say that the mean and standard deviation are best measures of location and spread when they are no extreme values. We can also say that the median and interquartile range are preferred when they are extreme values. Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you so much, Mrs. Jimmy, for this very well descriptive presentation. I did a good job. You tried very well to get it um, within ten minutes, but it was a bit over. Uh, okay, so I think we'll move on to the next uh, group. That should be um, team four. So give me a few minutes. Let me try and download your presentation. I'm sorry, team four, did you send your presentation to me? Or would you like to present it by yourselves? Oh, team four members. Hello, team four, are you there? So team four members are Sliman Bakal, Marvelous Wally, Mohammed Mas- Waziri, Matilda O'Geechy, um, Sunny Huturo, Omar Nuhu, and Vincent Von Toa. So is anyone present on this meeting?
Hello Jenny.
Hello.
Yes, please, if they are not available, let's move to the next group.
Okay, fine. Move to the next group. Alright, so next group is um, team five. Team five, are you present? There's Fatima Saleh, Ibrahim Mustafa, Jedida. There is Yusuf Mazwa, Muzal, sorry, sorry, I'm pronouncing it wrongly. Yusuf, there is Mohammed Omar, there's Mustafa Omar, and there's Noorah Idris. Please, are you present? Okay, Mrs. Sliman Bakal, I have your hand, your hand is raised though. Think you're from team.
Yeah.
Team four? Yes. Mrs. Sliman, can you raise, can you ask your question or do you want to make a comment? Can you unmute yourself?
Hello. My name is Sliman Bakal.
Hello, Sliman. Okay, you're from team four. Hello? Okay, so I think he has network challenges. We'll come back to him when his network is better. Hello? Okay, Mr. Vincent. So Vincent, do you want to help him out? Hello, can you hear me, Vincent? You're from team four. Okay, so we'll come back to team four in a bit. Let's move on to the next team. Okay, so let's move on to team five. So the next team, we'll come back to team four. Um, maybe later, so the next team is team five. So are Fatima Saleh, Ibrahim Mustafa, Jedida, Yusuf, Mohammed Omar, Mustafa Omar, and Noorah Idris. Are they all available? I did not receive your presentation either. So would you be presenting by yourself? You're supposed to present on module four. Our team four members here, sorry, team. Team five members, I did, all present at the meeting. Okay, let's move on to the next team. We'll come back to them. Team three, our team three members here, I think I have your presentation with me. So um, team three members, okay. Uh, we're presenting their screen. Okay, so team three members, I think they're presenting on module five. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, these are the team members. Um, Kalu Anthony, Enno Bong, Gideon Kabiru, Omotayo, and Ursula. These are you all present. Who's representing the team in this meet, for this meet? Hello, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, so are you from team, um, team three?
Nope.
Okay, so can team three members, please, can someone please take a presentation? I received it. I am presenting it. And your names are on the screen. There is Mr. Anthony, there's Enno, Ubong, Gideon, Kabiru, Omotayo, and Ursula. Anyone from the team here? Okay, okay, I still have to join the meeting again. Let's see what I should present. Okay. Alright, eh, can you hear me, Ursula? Hello?
Yes, I just got connected again.
Yeah, sorry. Welcome. Good evening. Okay, so this is your, this is your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Okay, so who's making the presentation?
Kalu is. Presentation.
Okay, sir. Alright then.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Your voice was a bit shaky.
Okay, okay. Good evening all.
Good evening.
Kalu Anthony, I said, team three. And we have another slide for classification of disease. We have another slide for classification of exposures. I'm reading out the outline. It's not on the, on the presentation. We have another slide on epidemiologically relevant time period. Misca- uh, misclassification and its effects. Categories of misca- uh.
Mr. Anthony, that's why he's shaky. Is it just me or is his network shaking?
Can you, can you hear me clearly now?
I'm not clear. I don't know if it's just my own network or is it general? Let's please tell me confirm. Is it my network or is it for everybody? Maybe just my network. Please continue.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, the next slide, please. Okay, um, when we talk about measurement and classification in epidemiologic investigations, in order to gain knowledge that can be generalized in a population of interest, epidemiologists must develop ways to efficiently measure both disease and exposure in the population. And that is the main point. We're trying to figure out informations and that are relevant to epidemiologic studies can be gotten from various sources. This includes the maps, medical records, death records, questionnaires we get from people or from our clients. Also, the cost and accuracy of the data gotten from these sources vary. The cost of getting a data from a hospital from different clients might be different, eh, might be eh, would differ, some might be. The following five W's, when making measurements to. And this, eh, it's. Must put this eh, in consideration, eh, measurement where it's occurring. And we are, we need to know when our cases are occurring. These are the timing, when our potential exposures are occurring also. We need to put, we need to take note of this. And lastly, we need to know why do people develop this particular disease we are investigating on? These are the five W's we need to put into consideration when we are trying to make decisions, some measurements, to investigate exposures and disease. And this is, please, the next slide. Now we talk about the classification of disease. All classi-
Sorry, um. Sorry, everybody. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. You are audible.
Okay, okay, fine. So Mr. Anthony is having issues with his network, right?
I can hear you.
Maybe you go to a particular facility.
Okay, Mr. Anthony. Mr. Anthony. Hello, can you hear me? Your network is terrible. Your network is terrible, Mr. Anthony. We're not hearing you very well. I don't know, can someone help you out or can you change your, change your network?
Oh, okay, maybe can I just um, take over from him and if, if he's able to resolve his network issue, he can.
Are you from, are you from, you're from the same team?
Yeah, I'm from the same team.
Okay, please, please do. Uh, once I know this will have a lot of information, I really would love to hear him speak, but his network is not so.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please continue.
Okay, we are talking about the next slide, which is eh, the classification of diseases. So we know that all classifications are made depending on all the eh, the health officer issues of classifications. So and eh, classification strategy depends on the purpose of classification, which may be one, diagnosis, therapy, prognosis, eh, prevention, assessing the causation. To have much greater ability to assess the association between exposure and disease, we have to limit our definition of disease only to those cases that are taught to have a causal relationship between the exposure and the disease. Please, the next slide. Next slide, please. Now we'll go to the classification of exposure. Remember we said, the, the previous slide was classification of diseases. This one is on exposure. Talk about epidemiology is on understanding the relationships between exposures and every reason. Eh, and. between exposure. You can see there the pointer after of ourselves, the next one is some people and not others.
Alright, can I repeat that? Can I repeat that, please?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, yeah, please take over.
Yes, please, um, take over. I think we're still on this, um-
Not the type of exposure matter.
So who's speaking?
Hello, Mr. Calu, can you hear me?
Oh, Mr. Calu is speaking.
Hello, Mr. Calu, can you, can you hear me? I want to try and take over from you.
Yeah, please, another person should take over. We can barely hear him.
Yes.
Alright, good evening, everybody. On, on behalf of the entire team, we apologize for the, for the disruption caused by Mr. Calu's, um, network. So I, I will just continue from where you stopped. Uh, I'll, I'll start with the classification of exposure. Can we all hear me, please?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright, thank you so much. So, uh, in epidemiology, it is very important to understand the relationships between exposure and di- and diseases. The natural relationship between exposure and outcome matters. Because sometimes, um, uh, the behavior of exposure in terms of how the outcome is achieved can vary all loads. And under these bullets, they, they are pointing like, for example, does the exposure cause the disease? Which is most of the time what we go out to investigate. Sometimes the exposure may not be the cause of the outcome that, uh, we are investigating. So we can set out and think that the particular exposure is causing a particular disease. But since we don't make any preemptive assumption when we are researching, so the exposure eventually may not be the cause of the particular outcome we are investigating. And does the exposure cause the disease in some people and not in the others? Sometimes, um, some people may just be immune. Sometimes, some people may be exposed and they don't come down with the, the, the infection. And, um, let's say, for example, the current pandemic that is ravaging the world, that I, 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 I think the status of how this pandemic behaves amongst children is still somewhat, some, some kind of a mystery because in most cases, despite the fact that they are probably been exposed. And we have also seen, um, evidence to show that, uh, the way the exposure, the way the, 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 the disease behaves in older people and people with comorbidities differ with, uh, the way it behaves in, in younger people. So does the exposure cause the disease in some people and not other? And does the type of exposure matter? Also, I recite a, an example of the COVID. Like, when we talk about how, um, somebody may be exposed to COVID, it can be person to person, it can be from surface. So does it matter what kind of exposure people are exposed to? When it comes to the exposure developing into the disease, is, is one more deadly than the other? People who are exposed to older people and people who are probably exposed maybe via surfaces and public transports. Uh, uh, is there any difference in that? And does the frequency of exposure matter? So when we talk about frequency, we talk about number. Is it that when somebody is exposed for the first time, first time they get the disease? Or does it need that, does it need for people to be exposed for multiple times before they get the disease? So all of these are small details, they matter. And does the magnitude of the exposure matter? And this talk about the size, the size of the exposure. So it is important to note that the definition of exposure should be based on the hypothesized mechanism of course. So it, this just means that before we set out to investigate the relationship between an exposure and disease, we must to some extent, uh, have a scientific backing that there is a biologically plausible mechanism linking the exposure to the disease. So we don't just set out and see and, and we do, we do just that and think this thing causes this thing, let's investigate. No, there, there must be biologically possible mechanism between the exposure and the disease. So it is important to define that mechanism. Next slide, next slide, please. Can I move to the next slide, please? Am I still audible?
So we can hear you. We can hear you.
Alright, thank you. In investigating the relationship between exposure and disease, it's also important to understand the epidemiologically relevant time period. And this is the timeframe when the exposure is likely to cause disease. So it is the timeframe when the exposure is likely to cause disease. Every disease has an induction period. That is the period between when somebody is exposed and the onset of disease. Even if they are asymptomatic at the onset of the disease, the induction period is still the time period between, uh, exposure and the onset of disease. For COVID-19, for example, I, 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 I think we have seen evidence to, to assume that it ranges from some people from maybe three to five days and maximum of 14 days. So we have like an induction or, or, or an incubation period of, of 18 days in the maximum between exposure and the onset of disease. So it is important to know that, to note that any exposure that occur outside of the induction period, let's say before the induction period or too close to the onset of disease cannot be causally related to the outcome. And if we look at, um, this little diagram in front of us, we have the gray part, which is the non-diseased part. The non-diseased phase is actually when, uh, an individual may be exposed. We have the yellow, uh, path, which is the asymptomatic phase. It's a disease phase and we have the symptomatic phase in the red. And we have the blue line at the end, which is either death or resolution of the disease. So when somebody is exposed, the time bound, the timeframe between exposure and the onset of disease, even if symptoms are yet to come in, is, uh, is the induction period. So if, um, for example, let's take COVID-19, for example, i- i- if we think somebody, uh, has been exposed today, today, 21st of February, to believe somebody has been exposed today, it means, um, we have an induction period of about 14 days that the person is expected to proceed to disease. If that particular exposure, if that particular exposure could lead to disease. So it means any exposure that, uh, occurred, let's say, five days before that time can not be causally related to disease. Even though the same exposure could cause the disease. Like, for example, um, I'd be probably-
Uh, sorry, I think I muted the wrong person. Can you, can you, if you're not presenting, can you mute yourself, please? I need your presenting, please unmute yourself. I think I muted the wrong person. Thank you.
Okay, um, I've muted myself now. So I, I was trying to cite an example of, uh, um, induction period. And I was trying to use COVID-19 as an example. If, for example, and I was trying to say that any exposure that took place outside of the induction period before or too close to the onset of disease could not be causally related to disease, even though that particular exposure may also cause the disease. And I just cited an example that, let's assume that I, I flew on an aircraft, let's say to Nigeria, and it was discovered that somebody on that plane had, uh, uh, tested positive to COVID. So I've, I've been exposed on the plane. But if after 14 days I still don't test positive, it means that exposure, uh, if after, let's say if after 20 days, they had been on that plane, I tested positive. It means that my exposure 20 days ago with what we know on COVID-19 could not have been the exposure, could not have been causally related to the disease that I'm currently developing. So if an exposure happens, uh, longer than the known induction period or too close to the onset of disease, it cannot be causally related. And also exposures that occur after the onset of a disease cannot be causally related to disease. So let's say I'm already testing positive and I'm exposed to it. So, um, I, I think this is where, um, I think this sequence or, uh, or, or what do you call it? We had it in a, in an earlier mood. Exposure was always come before disease. So if somebody is already diseased, any exposure that occurs during the disease could not be causally related to disease. Even though if that exposure could lead to disease. Next slide, please. So now we want to talk about misclassification and its effect. And, um, to some extent, misclassification is always present in all measurements and in all studies. So just like, um, errors could be present in all measurement. So in, 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 in all studies, a misclassification can take place. So the degree to which misclassification takes place depends on, or a whole lot of factor. So, but misclassification may occur as a result of imperfect measurement or inaccurate or incomplete information. So let's take imperfect measurements, for example. Uh, like measuring the wrong person, uh, measuring at the wrong time, using, um, a wrong, uh, measurements and using the wrong classification and errors may even set in human errors, random errors, systematic errors that could lead to misclassification. Like, um, I, I, I think there have been reported some cases, some people, uh, theorize that maybe samples could even get mixed up. You, you, maybe you are doing some field studies and you are testing a lot of people, you are collecting samples. If samples are not well labeled, they could get mixed up and you may eventually misclassify somebody that is not diseased as being diseased. And also inaccurate or incomplete information could also be a source of misclassification. Like when you are doing a study that involves, um, recall, like in, in, in a retrospective study, when people, when you are, uh, supposed to ask people to recall their exposure, you rely on their, uh, ability to recall correctly whether they have been exposed or not. So in this case, misclassification is setting, in case maybe misclassified as, as control. And like I said earlier, physical laboratory measurement records, when you get, uh, secondary data, existing data, you may also, um, misclassify people from that as well. Yeah, misclassification is setting as a result of miss reporting and imperfect definition. In terms of imperfect de- de- definition, I think there is something called, um, case definition. Case definition. So when you are doing a, a study, you must, uh, define your case in a sense that it will be difficult to have a mix of. But if a case definition is too vague, you could misclassify cases as control and, um, and controls as cases. So effect of, um, misclassification. So exposure misclassification limits the ability to find true associations. So, um, when people who are exposed are classified as unexposed, or people who are exposed that misclassified as disease, the true association between disease and exposure would be very, very difficult to find. So there are two types of misclassification that we'll be talking about in the next slide. But because we are talking about effect of misclassification in this slide, so we are talking about them as well. Non-differential misclassification and differential misclassification. So the effect of non-differential misclassification is that it attenuates the degree of association between exposure and outcome. That, that if it kind of, um, minimized, i- 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 it kind of makes it look like there is no association. So if, for example, the, what you will get at the end of the day as odds ratio or relative risk will still be positive, or if it is like 1.5, for example, you may be getting 1.4, which means it, it shows that, um, instead, i- i- instead of you getting the fact that, okay, uh, exposed are 75% more likely to get the disease. You may be getting exposed at like 30% more likely to get disease. So which means the degree of association has been kind of minimized, has been attenuated. It still shows that there is an association, but it is not giving us the true degree of the association between exposure and outcome. And in differential misclassification, it can falsely exaggerate or falsely minimize the association between exposure and outcome. So when a differential misclassification take place, it, it can exaggerate the association. So i- 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 we can even get something opposite depending on how the misclassification took place. When there is no association, we may be getting an association. And when there is an association, we may be getting no association. Next slide, please.
Okay, Mr. Um, Mano, please, round up. I'll give you three minutes to finish your presentation.
Alright, thank you. Please, let's move to the next slide. Okay, uh, so sorry for, for taking our time. So, uh, like I said earlier, categories of misclassification, non-differential and differential. So I will just summarize this in like one or two sentences. In non-differential misclassification, the likelihood of being mis- of being misclassified as exposed or diseased is not different for exposed and for diseased and non-diseased. The likelihood of misclassification is not different, is the same. And it varies between, uh, diseased and non-diseased. Please, let's move to the next slide. So, uh, this is about quantifying misclassification and, uh, measuring, measurement. So in epidemiology, we do a lot of measurements, we do screening tests and, um, we make definitions. So in, i- i- in measurement, the tools we use in measurement, uh, there, there are two key characteristics for which we should measure them, which is precision and accuracy. So precision is the ability of that to, to reproduce the measurement. Like, if you use the tool and get a particular, uh, value, are you able to, is whether that value is the true representation? We talk about sensitivity and specificity. Sensitivity is the ability of the test to be positive when disease is present. So the ability of the test to detect the disease when the disease is present. And, um, specificity is the ability of the test to report negative when the disease is not present. So, and in clinical decision making, what is important is the positive predictive value and the negative predictive value. So the positive predictive value is, is this present when the test is showing positive. So that's the probability that the disease is present if the test is positive. And for negative predictive value is the disease absent when the result is negative. So both PPV and MPV depends on prevalence of the disease and are adding clinical decision making and offering advice to patients. Next slide, please. So, uh, strategies to minimize, uh, misclassification, to reduce this, and this is, this is actually the last slide. So like I said earlier, if trunk case or disease definition must be specific, and what we are looking for must be specific, we must define it and in, in, in such a, and the definition of exposure criteria. Criteria, categories of exposure should not be taking place at the same time. If one is present, the other have to be present. So this should be mutually exclusive and it should be relevant to the causal mechanisms. So like I said earlier, the, the, the relationship, the biological relationship between the exposure and the disease. They, they saw the exposure that we're investigating should be relevant to, to that causal mechanism that is scientifically proved. And as much as possible, we should, we should blind, blind, uh, if, blind some, uh, investigators, blind some research assistants, blind some lab scientists. And as much as possible, we should try to avoid recall. Like we said earlier, that recall in, in, in themselves maybe causes, uh, sources of, uh, misclassification when people have been made to recall their exposure. So as much as possible, we should avoid recall. And when we use recall, we should provide aid to, to, to help people to remember their, um, their exposure. Like for example, if you are investigating whether people have taken a particular drug or not, many people can show people, have you taken this, this drug before? So when we, when we would like to use recall, it is important that we provide aid to help people to be able to recall correctly. Thank you so much and we are so sorry for the network disruption and for me taking time. I was not actually prepared to present. But thank you so much for your time. Over.
Alright, thank you so much for this Harvard Standard, um, presentation. Okay, so let's move on to the next, um. So next in the line of, um, presentations is supposed to be, um, Team One.
What can I do for you? Oh, you want to know?
Uh, okay, Team One. So the members of- So the members of Team One are Ada Uzamaka, Grace Saleh, Ifoma Loretta, Ikemefuna McHenry, Kenneth Itwa, and Ol- Oluwah Jumakeraji. I see one member's presence here. I have not received your presentation either. Team One members, are you present? Okay, um I received the presentation for Team Four. Um so let me, I'll quickly download that and then present it. Okay. Okay, so if you are presenting, please mute your mics, okay? And Team Four. Um, okay, so who's presenting for Team Four? Hello? Someone's speaking. Team Four members.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, hi me.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Jennifer, okay, let's let's have the slide on. Let me let me take my big shot.
Sorry?
Let's have the slides. Okay, I'll save group for presentation. Let me take my best shot here. I just got it. I've been driving all this way.
Okay, all right, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. So even while talking to you, I'll sit driving while I'm coming. I just got it. Yes.
All right then.
All right, let's uh let's go. Let's move to the next slide. The fourth presentation, well, actually uh looking at a module tree. Okay. All right, so uh we are looking at, first of all, we'll look at the introduction. Um looking at the bullet points there, the research design refers to the overall processes used in carrying out a research. And then uh what does it do, the design does, what does it do? It is used to determine by the problem in question. It determine which research tool to be used. It also determines the participants to be recruited. Now, this is the introductory parts. As we go on, we'll begin to make a couple of explanation to the next slide, please. Jennifer, next slide. Now, type of uh etiological, if your demological studies include uh descriptive. Now, there are two types, analytic and descriptive. So we're going to be looking at uh what's called descriptive, mostly used to describe the emergence of the new element or disease. And uh what does it look like, what it looks like, and then comparison, uh number of comparison of that group. Next slide, please. Now, um under descriptive, we have the case report and so on. We have a number of them coming up. The case report equally involves only one individual. Uh for example, the first case of COVID nineteen reported by a Chinese doctor in Wuhan uh city in China in the year twenty nineteen. Now, this is a case report we're looking at, will be equally be looking at uh uh some other under the description, and then we'll be looking at um under the analytic as well. Next slide. Now, case series, we know, we said that uh we have either a case series or case report. So the part of which is on the, part of which is the the descriptive. It equally involves several case reports, for example, when COVID nineteen became endemic. And then both case reports and case studies can be an odd occurrences or to define an undisclosed element. So either case, either case series or um case report. Next slide, please. I know that we have quite a number of um um presentation is quite like, but I'm trying as much as possible to walk us through that as 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 quickly as possible. All right, we have ecological studies, which is equally a descriptive. When case reports and case series happen in several communities, for example, countries, cities, district, and so forth. It equally takes advantage, uh average status of both the exposure and outcome within a given population. Uh the very common one is the uh endemic, the epidemic that is the pandemic currently, which is the COVID nineteen, uh how it was able to become an epidemic. It was able to become a epidemic, uh having come through it from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one and so on. Next slide. Now, the second aspect of this is a kind of uh case study or case design is the analytic study. We've talked about some of the examples under the descriptive. Now, we're looking at the analytic study. We said that it's when you have in-depth knowledge of of uh the disease and its relationship with other factors, other factors is required. It equally involves frequency. It also has, uh it also determines uh the the disease, the association, for example, factors affecting COVID nineteen uh infection, and it consists of the following. Next slide. Now, now these are some of, act of most of the example of the analytic study. Number, the first one is the cross-sectional study. What is that one and how is it used? Where is it applied? It is used when determining the prevalence of the disease in a given community. The very common example we talked about is the COVID nineteen infection among the IDP camp, uh where you have a concentration number of uh people, inhabitants. We understand that there's a prevalence, and the prevalence is the number of diseases uh over the number of the total population. We equally have the odd ratio, uh which is um from two by two table, you'd be able to um uh divide the the upper ratio and the lower ratio. The president layer show is equally um there's a formula that has been used, the actual item present, prepare this presentation. So um I have not been able to look at it. I I felt that probably I have to look at that. Uh but the time is quite short, but I think we'll get to understand what we'll begin to, out of the assignment we've done, we'll understand what the prevalence is, what the odd ratio is, as well as what a prevalent ratio is. Thank you. Next slide. Now, um under the cross-sectional studies, we have uh the advantage and disadvantages of actually applying the case study to uh present uh a design, a a design. We have the advantage whereby you can calculate prevalence easily. You'd be able to, it's very efficient to use, it's cost-effective when you apply it in a case study. Uh and equally, it's done in early phase of the new disease. What are the side effects or what are the disadvantage of using cross-sectional study in the event you are carrying such studies? You can't draw conclusion about the casualty, and you can, it's not prone to selection bias, bias selection or selection bias. Thank you. Next slide. Now, uh equally, the case, the case control studies equally are analytical, an example of the analytical study. Analytic study is used in tracking down the um the number of a given disease or condition of interest. It is used in identifying population that have exposed, that were exposed or without disease of interest. Um calculative incidence is equal to the new case of the disease upon the population initially at rates. Uh it is used in a, in in a closed population, for example, in factories, in hospitals, and so on. A few examples which we have just mentioned. Thank you. Case control equally has its own advantage and disadvantage. Some of the advantages that we use in case of using that are good for rare outcomes, uh can access multiple exposures, uh is equally is cost-effective, as well as this is e- e- efficient. And you understand the other side, the disadvantage of using the case study is it can determine prevalence like CSS, uh difficult to determine the process, and it's equally prone to recall and bias, uh selection bias. Cohort study, cohort study is equally part of the analytic study. So it's like a reverse order of case, case control study on the other side. Followed the exposed over time uh and see who developed the disease and who did not. Uh patient, for example, patient is getting infected or not with COVID nineteen virus. Uh it is usually, it usually tells how often an individual got infected by the disease via uh incidence rate. Now, we that, we now said that incident rate is equal to the new case of disease upon the population time at rates. Thank you. Next slide. Now cohort study as well, uh as well has its own advantage and disadvantage. Now, what are some of these advantages and disadvantages? One is it calculates, uh it calculates or it can calculate incidence. Uh the rate is good for rare exposure, it's equally established a consequence. On the other hand, the disadvantage of course, uh cohort studies, it's expensive. Consumes quite a lot of money and time when you are using such studies. It's biased due to loss to follow. Thank you. Just uh randomized control trial. Now, this is equally a very wonderful um uh aspect of the analytic study. It's an example of that same cohort study, only that uh that exposures are assigned to individual rather than observation. So that's one aspect of it. We could use um exposures to assign to individual rather than using the observation. Next slide. Now, equally, just as the other uh studies, on the, just like the other designs, on the uh under the analytic uh design, analytic study, we equally have the advantages and disadvantages. One of the advantages or among the many advantages, we have been gold standard. It allow casual inference and it's limited, uh it has limit confounding factors. Then the disadvantage involves not cost-effective, it's not cost-effective. Um loss or follow-up is easily identified. It's not ethical to assign a harmful exposure or drive uh one from useful exposure. Next slide. Meta-analysis. This aspect of uh the study, it is used or it analyzes all the already existed and published literatures, summarizes result from different studies. Uh next slide. Measure of outcome and exposure. What are these to guide against misclassification? Disease that starts as clinical syndrome, agent detection, immune exposure, and then the risk factors which is cycle, demographic, behavior, and medicine uh to patients, medications to patients. Selection of study population. There are two types, the probability which is random and then not probability, which is low, not random. Among the uh between uh uh some of the uh example of the probability random is the simple random sampling and then the stratified random sampling, which are part of the uh sampling that I use on the probability. Under non-probability, convenience, quota, uh purpose and uh snowballing. Next slide.
Okay, that's
So thank you so much, please. I beg your pardon because I've not actually been able to and look at, I just kept driving very fast and I had to get in. Because when it was called already, I was on the way and I I tried to communicate, but it was like you were not able to hear me. Thank you for your time.
All right, so thank you so much uh for the presentation. Uh this goes to show that teamwork is important. And um even though um someone else made a presentation, at least team members were there to support, and that's actually quite good. Okay, so so far, we have not, we, this is just um, we are just gonna share from Team Four. So Team Five, I have not seen your presentation. Is anyone from Team Five present? And um Team Six, anyone from Team Six? Okay, all right. Um so I think we've come to the end of the presentation. So are there any questions? For everyone. I think it would be a good thing to make these um notes present available to everybody. So because they contain a lot of information and um I think they are very, very useful. So I think we'll share the information, that's with everyone's consent. Can we share this um slide to everybody? Hello?
I think yes.
Okay, fine. That's good. So I will share everything.
That's the, that's a good idea.
Okay, fine. I will share everything on the WhatsApp group then. I mean, I make it into PDF so that you can use your phone app to go through it. So are there any questions? Were there any questions um during the presentations? Right, so no questions? Since there are no questions, I'd like to thank everyone on behalf of um Harvard Learning Institute. I'd like to thank everyone. Learning does not stop here, and we'll continue to learn in our respective platforms. If you still have any questions after today, you guys see, possibly your respective teams, if they have the answers, comes provided. So it's, I I feel this was actually a very good um session. It helped us to understand what was there to be better. And also the notes when I share with everybody will help out. So. So on behalf of Harvard E-Learning, I say good night to everyone, and thank you so much for being part of this. So have a great week ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really appreciate. Good night.
Thank you so much.
Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Good night. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Bye, team four. Congratulations.
Good night.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.
Well done, team three. Awesome. Bye, team three.